Mr. Wayne Blair.
A pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. I'd like to welcome everybody to this, our first policy committee meeting of the year. We've got some new members on board tonight, and I'd like to introduce those. We've got Ms. Dana Nichols from HR Central Office, Ms. Emily Mitchell, she's an elementary teacher, David Jury, and Mr. Fred Barlow, Principal of Rockville Middle. So, I'd like to welcome you all on board. Appreciate you serving. This time, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. McLeod, and she'll take a clue to each item she has.
We have seven policies on the agenda tonight, starting with number one, Policy 3.208. This is a facility plan, this is a new policy we have not had previously. The most recent policy I've ever received from TSBA included a facility planning policy as required by federal regulations. It has to include an asbestos maintenance plan and a facility maintenance plan and many plans. So, this is TSBA's model policy with the exception of one thing. When we met to discuss this policy, Mr. Odom and Mr. Cardy felt like a report that they did to the Board. TSBA had recommended be in October, be delayed until December to give us time to get accurate attendance numbers, and that'd be about the time you'd be looking at your building program as well. So, we just compiled that all into one reporting for you.
We haven't had three months' report yet. It'll be the ninth of November before we get the third month's report. And we usually do our five-year plan, you know, in November. So, it kinda makes sense to just get past some of that to do the other, get all the pieces together.
Also to note that there's nothing included here that we're not already doing. It just hasn't been written in the policy, and I've compiled them all together.
Anybody have any further questions? Move to approve. Motion by Mr. Blair.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nipper. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number two.
Number two is Policy 4.606, Graduation Activities. And we have the number three, a policy of the state board would require us to have some language in a policy indicating that students who graduate with distinction and graduate with honors will be recognized at graduation ceremonies. So, you can see I highlighted forty, the last line in that policy, line nineteen. Principals shall ensure that students graduate with distinction and state honor are recognized at graduation.
And that happened last year, we just didn't have the policy written. Because most of you attended, and you saw some of that. Or they were, had ribbons, colored ribbons, it was in the program, and all four of them.
Move to approve. Motion by Mr. Young.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blair. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number three.
Number three is Policy 1.404, An Anxious Appeal, Two and Three to the Forty- Minutes. First on the agenda at the question in the college, I highlighted forty on line seventeen. We have left in the policy the time limit for each person who is a visitor to speak will be three minutes. There was a section after that that said that that timeframe could be extended by the Chairman of the Board, by the majority voter of the Board. We've removed that portion. And also added that next sentence, no person shall be allowed to make personal attacks on members of the Board or employees of the school system. And most of you remember when that has come up in the past, we've recommended to use our complaint procedure, which we continue to do, but this way you haven't arrived, that this is not the forum for those kinds of complaints.
Any more comments?
Question.
Mr. Wade.
You say in the original language, there was a section that said that it could be increased to more than three minutes after the approval of the Chair.
Chairman or majority voter.
And you took that out?
Yes.
Wasn't any reason why you took that out?
Mr. Halliday, I think, wanted to try to limit that to three minutes for each visitor.
Yeah, we just allotted thirty minutes, and you get so many people involved with it. So, many people want to speak, so we just decided to limit, because we've been, you know, we've been good about it, letting the ones that speak that are here. But some of them want to speak ten minutes, you know, and you just have to have a cutoff.
I got a question myself. You made a comment that we have thirty minutes allotted. I don't see in here that we have thirty minutes. And what I'm afraid is that if we try to tell more than ten, give them all three minutes and tell more than ten people, I mean, you cut it off, then some of them are gonna get upset, well, your policy doesn't say thirty minutes.
It's on the best of sheets you gotta fill out.
Okay.
It basically states.
But basically, what I'm asking is, could we put it in here, no more than thirty minutes?
If you want a maximum of thirty minutes, is that what you're saying, a lot?
I guess I am.
Perfect.
I mean, that's fine.
Well, I mean, you know.
If we need to, if we need to.
I don't want to give them ammunition to come back on us and, you know, say, well, it's not in your policy.
Yeah, I don't know where thirty minutes, but if you have a lot of people, if you have more than ten people show up and want to speak, that's your thirty minutes there. So, if fifteen people show up, you have to treat them all equally. So, you would have to give them all three minutes at that point. So, you really want to be able to cut them off.
We'd take them in order.
You'd have to take them in order.
We'd take them in order.
Even if you have in here no more than thirty minutes?
I don't see how you can arbitrarily cut off people.
Okay.
So, probably not without the policy.
Not without the policy.
Yeah.
But that's the reason for the three minutes.
Right, that's correct, yes. I mean, generally, I mean, you have occasional times it could be an issue, but generally, it's not an issue, as you know.
Right.
Move to approve. Motion by Mr. Blair.
Second.
Second by Ms. Blankenship. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number four.
Number four is 1.803, Tobacco Free Schools. And as you can see in the beginning, line one there, I highlighted for you, we have added to the provisions in the Department of Schools policy, cigarette cigarettes and personal vaporizers. So, most of you probably wear it or not, and now like electronic cigarettes and vaporizers that look like a cigarette. They supposedly don't contain any tobacco, but it creates a perception that people are smoking. We have not had this included in our policy before, and we've had issues come up already with it. So, we have added it, and several other issues are going to be included.
Any questions, Mr. Young? Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Young, and a second by Ms. Blankenship. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number five.
Number five is 1.704, Charter School. As you know, in our process of reviewing our current charter school applications, we met with several other districts who did this process multiple times, reviewed several policies, and through our own experience realized there were some things that our policy was lacking. So, we added two sections on page two, and I highlighted those for you. Starting on line eleven, the following provisions must be adhered to. All applications must apply to Tennessee Department of Education application requirements. Late applications will not be accepted. The operating budget must be submitted in a state-approved budget format. Each application will be reviewed for completeness. If required elements are not present, or if the application is in an incorrect format, the application will not be reviewed and will be returned to the applicant. One of the things that we learned is that other districts review it just for completeness and accuracy as affirmed in the beginning. If it's not accurate, then that takes that out of your review completely. So, we added those provisions for those reasons. Then on down to line twenty-five, further requirements are, all charter schools must adhere to the grade structure established by the Department of Education. Charter schools may only serve students whose primary residence is within Wetherford County. The third one, we got our wording mixed up, I think, in translating and making it forward. What it should say is, it is expected that the candidate status for accreditation with SACs will be reviewed during, will be received during the first year of the charter school operation for charter schools for grades nine through twelve. That is to say that they must have the same SAC standards of accreditation, but they won't be able to get that process started until during that first year of operation.
They put you on candidate status for the first year. You can't receive it the first year.
So, we just had to change it to say they wouldn't get it the first year, but they would have candidate status the first year.
If they make application, they'll go into candidate status.
And then also including that they must meet graduation requirements and provide curriculum approved by the University of Tennessee, Tennessee Board of Regents, and the NCAAA requirements for Division One schools. Must comply with state code, regulation regarding school nutrition, transportation, business purchases, and special education unless applicable waiver is granted by the Tennessee Department of Education. And these were just areas that we felt like we had not adequately covered in our policy. So, the future applicants will be clear on what we expect.
But your third point's gonna be different than what you have here, right?
It will be, and the only difference will be that we would say candidacy for SACs accreditation will be received that first year rather than actual accreditation.
Have you understood that?
With the addition of an administrative staff person who is specifically intended to review charter school applications, is there reason to make mention of that office in the policy?
I don't think there's a reason to mention the office, because you're still required to have a review team. I mean, I think you would initially review the applications and screen, but I think, I mean, it was due to re-review by the team.
Move to approve. Motion by Mr. Holiday.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blair. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number six.
The last two, I'll let Mr. Reese review them, he worked on those two, so I'll let him do that.
So, yeah, the first of the last two is gonna be 6.702, which is Student Club and Organizations. This came out of some kind of board directive for us to look at some things we could do to make sure the schools are providing places for our student club to post posters, information, materials in schools. So, if you look at this, the only thing viewed in this policy will be the paragraph immediately before the hazing section. And it's the long paragraph there, which I'll go through, and just, what this does is basically provides that non-curricular student clubs and organizations can, shall have a designated bulletin board with at least one in the school hallway, and they could have more to post their information on. It says that will be posted for no longer than one school semester. Curriculars clubs, such as Beta Club, you know, your math teams, things like that, student groups that are directly tied to the school, can continue to post things in the classrooms if teachers in that particular classroom allow it, and that complies with the local school administration rules. But again, with respect to even the curricular classes, their posters and signs can't stay longer than one semester. So, let me just read through what this says here. But what it says is, each school shall designate one or more bulletin boards in the school hallway for non-curricular student clubs and non-curricular student organizations duly organized within the school to post signs, information, and slash or posters. Any such signs, information, and slash or posters are subject to the standard rules the school administration establishes regarding signs, posters, and posted information. No such signs, information, and posters shall remain posted for longer than one school semester. Non-curricular student clubs and organizations shall not post or distribute signs, posters, or other material in classrooms. Duly organized curricular student clubs, curricular student organizations, school athletic teams, and school bands may post signs, posters, and other information in classrooms if allowed by the classroom teacher with respect to that teacher's classroom and the local school administration, so long as said signs, posters, and posted information comply with the standard rules of the local school administration and the school system. No signs, posters, and information shall be posted for longer than one semester. So, again, what this does then, it says with respect, it makes a distinction between your curricular clubs and your non-curricular clubs. Your non-curricular clubs have to be provided a bulletin board in the hallway to post their signs, information, and posters on. There'd be at least one of those, it could be more, if the school allows more to be in the hallway. With respect to curricular clubs, they can continue to post things in classrooms if that particular teacher allows it and this local school administration allows it. So, it still leaves a good deal of discretion with the local school administrator. We want the local principal to be involved with that decision and handle that on kind of a case-by-case basis if things come up. So, that's the proposed change to Policy 6.702.
Can they make a request to have it be in the second semester?
They could request that, again, to be reposted, yes. But the intent of that would just not allow things to be posted for years, so they have to do one semester, and then it has to come down at least by the end of the semester.
Any more questions? Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Holiday, and a second by Mr. Nipper. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number seven, Mr. Reese.
The next policy we're looking at is Policy number 6.304. This was the existing policy the Board had on student discrimination, bullying, and intimidation. And out of some series of meetings the Board had over the last couple of months, the issue has come up with respect to basically trying to make sure all students are treated equally with respect to bullying policy. And the Board wanted me to look at the policy and see if anything could be done to kind of accentuate that we do not tolerate any bullying within the school to any students for whatever circumstances, regardless of for any reason. A couple of things that we've added to this specifically is, you know, to prohibit harassment based on sexual orientation or gender identity. So, the changes that you see on this policy are gonna be under the section that says bullying, harassment, and intimidation. And there are no other changes except those, some under that section. Let me just read through what we, the first series of changes that we did on that. But what we have added to the policy was kind of a clearer, a more direct statement that the Board does not prohibit harassment or bullying based for any reason. And what we say here is, this is Rutherford County Board of Education is committed to providing all students a learning environment free from bullying or harassment based on race, color, religion, national origin, handicap, disability, sexual orientation, ancestry, or gender, including gender identity, expression, and appearance. So, we've got some categories we've added there. National origin is a new one, handicap, disability, we talked about before. But then we've added sexual orientation, ancestry, and gender identity as well to those categories. The second paragraph underneath that section says, "The school system expects all students to treat each other with civility and respect, and not to engage in behavior that is disruptive or violent. The school system will not tolerate acts of bullying or harassment." And this policy addresses conduct that takes place on school grounds, at any school-sponsored activity, school-sponsored transportation, at any official school bus stop immediately before boarding and immediately after leaving school transportation of any kind by students. Additionally, bullying and/or cyberbullying that begins off-campus can be considered school-related if it interferes with school activities, causes disruption at school, or interferes with the rights of the students. So, that's meant to tie into school bullying. So, if you have this bullying going on, going on on Facebook or some social website, that could constitute a violation of this policy that the school could address at the school level. The other thing that this policy does, it adds a section for cyberbullying specifically that was in the student handbook, but that never was actually in the policy itself. So, this comes from the Tennessee COVID-19 statute, and we've added a section here that says cyberbullying. And we define cyberbullying as defined as the use of information and communication technologies, including but not limited to email, cellphone, and pager voice text, still photograph, or video messages, instant messaging, infamatory personal websites, social networking sites, and online personal polling sites or journals to support deliberate, to support deliberate and hostile behavior intended to frighten, harm, or embarrass others. And then we add, this is something that some other systems had in the policy. It says, "Due to the restrictions of access to certain social networking sites, the school system requests that parents provide documentation of any alleged cyberbullying." Because it's not always easy for us to get access to Facebook and things like that at school level. So, if parents have complaints about that, they want to raise, they want to bring our attention, that we want us to address at school level, this allows us to do it. We would ask for parents' assistance to provide us access passwords, things like that, to access those sites that we otherwise might not be able to access. Another section that we, in doing this policy, well, I did, I looked at a number of policies for a number of states, and also looked at some throughout Tennessee. And several of these policies throughout Tennessee and the other states we've looked at had a clear section that prohibits kind of artificial complaints to be filed. We don't want this policy to be abused, people to make up false accusations to their classmates alleging bullying when it has not occurred. So, there's a prohibition here of reprisal, retaliation, and false accusations. And what this says, it says, "The Rutherford County Board of Education prohibits reprisal, retaliation, or false accusation against any person who witnesses and or reports an act of bullying and harassment. The consequence and appropriate remedial action for a person who engages in reprisal, retaliation, or false accusation shall be determined by the Director of Schools and or Principal or their designees after considering the nature, severity, and circumstance of the act in accordance with case law, board policies, and procedures. Any act of retaliation, reprisal, or false accusation against any person who reports bullying and harassment will not be tolerated. Any student who engages in an act of retaliation, reprisal, or who falsely accuses another shall be subjected to consequences and appropriate remedial action." Says, "In cases where any state or federal law has allegedly been violated, the local law enforcement agency shall be notified." So, this section does two things. It first says that if someone makes a complaint of harassment, that whoever that is alleged against should not have any kind of a court reprisal to retaliation taken against them. So, it prohibits other students from retaliating against them for making those accusations. But then the second thing it does is, in the event false accusations are made, it allows the Director of Schools and or Principal to take appropriate disciplinary action should a student make up a story as to harassment or bullying when that has not occurred. So, that's a new element of this policy. So, I think what the changes do in summary here, it basically more directly and clearly states the Board does not tolerate harassment or bullying based on any of these categories that we typically deal with. We've added a couple of categories there, which are gonna be national origin, sexual orientation, and gender identity. So, that's been added clearly to this policy to make sure that will be covered by this policy. One caveat that I need to mention with regard to this policy is, we have had some ongoing issues with respect to our existing policy with the federal government who has not liked the fact that we had handicap disability as a category underneath this policy, because they thought, some of the federal agencies thought that was confusing as to where people filed complaints regarding that harassment. So, if the Board is inclined to adopt this policy, we'd be willing to send this on to some federal agencies for their review and approval. And what they would particularly be looking at probably is the handicap disability listing in here. You know, I think the intent of this policy is simply to say that students are not gonna be discriminated against because of handicap or disability, and in my mind, that's not too confusing. But some federal agencies have thought that's confusing. So, if we need to ultimately end up taking that out of this category, we might end up having to move that somewhere else. But that's not because we would tolerate handicap or disability discrimination. It's simply a product of federal government telling us what they want us to do with respect to our policies. So, for right now, what I would envision, if we're doing it, if we're inclined to approve this, is go ahead and leave that in there now, and we'll send that to the appropriate federal agencies. And if they want to have comment with respect to asking that to be changed or taken out, we can address that later on. But this goes ahead and does allow the Board to address the other issues that have been reported to the Board for the last couple of months, and let us go ahead and make changes to directly address the issues we've been presented with for the last few months.
What you're saying, if they don't approve this, let bring it back in February or something like that, I guess?
We might, but, you know, it could take a year here from them. You don't know how long it's gonna take. And the question is whether we want to wait or not, or go ahead and do it. I probably suggest us go ahead and do it, just go ahead and do it and send it to them. And whenever they get to it, or give us what their response, we can deal with that once we get it from them. And the only really issue I think we might have with it is whether we leave handicap disability in the policy or not. And we do, we do have to take it out, it's not because we would allow, we would be encouraging bullying, of course. It's just something they would want us to do somewhere else, and have that covered somewhere else in our policies.
Mr. Barlow, how about the cyberbullying? I know that you're, this is the new issue, does that seem to cover?
It does, especially with the provisions in there that parent couples with the contact, because sometimes unless they bring us the documentation, we have, we have nothing to act on. So, it is beneficial that they provide us with something, especially if they want us to look into it at the school level.
Mr. Holiday, or Mr. Wade?
Yeah, I have a question about bullying policy. I assume, I'm not supposed to assume, but in the student handbook, there is a section that tells them the process they need to go through if they feel like that they've been a victim of bullying. Is it in the student, they have to tell the whole process? What I'm asking because some of us are familiar with some type of situation that went on here in Rutherford County where it occurred more than once with the same individuals. Do you have a uniform punishment? Is it determined by each facility, each facility, how they all way of doing it? Everybody do it the same way? I mean, is it left up to the individual school to handle it the way that they want to handle it?
The discipline is up to the individual school, taking into account, you know, the circumstances of each case, the discipline record the student has had in the past, and using our system of discipline.
We have a level of discipline system. So, if it's gone on for a period of time, it might be a level two or three. Or if it's your first encounter, it might be a level one. And that's spelled out in the student handbook, the level, the way it might be. And then each level, there's an option of disciplines approved under each of those levels, right?
Right.
I guess my concern is about some kind of consistency, consistency. Don't, won't you be determined based on who it is and what status the person held, and those type of things? I think consistent, the consistent punishments or whatever, is it gonna be consistent? Is it gonna be subjective or what?
A lot of times, those are very case-dependent. I mean, severity, access, frequency, you start to look at a lot of factors. And then you have to also look at the factor of impact on the school. So, to just lay down a set, you know, what is cyberbullying? Is that sending an email? Is that sending a picture? Is that sending multiple texts? Is that, it starts to vary. So, to not have the leeway of saying, this situation deserves this versus this situation deserves that, I think would really lock us into some scenarios where we may not actually be giving a just punishment.
It's not uncommon in the court system, I'm not an attorney, but judge may have up to a certain thing, but they have some flexibility based on the conditions for that, I mean.
Yeah, there's no, you know, for, each case, you know, is gonna be a little bit different. So, these are all.
So these are all always kind of case-by-case determinations. And you always want to have whoever's ranging some kind of punishment, leaving with some discretion with respect to making the right decision for that particular case. So, you know, we have zero tolerance, as you know, with respect to some offenses, and zero tolerance is often being criticized in the state as not allowing the schools to really tether the appropriate punishment for some of these acts that take place. And one of the common criticisms of zero tolerance is the fact that it does not allow the person making the disciplinary decision, really the authority they need to make to appropriately address it, or just stuck in these regimented zero tolerance fields that they have no option for. So with respect to all these disciplinary matters, it's always good to have some level of discretion for the person who makes those decisions. And certainly you would hope that person will be consistent within their school with respect to how they administer punishment, to be fair about it.
Yeah, I'm grateful to read why I asked, I'm just out of concern about being fair and being somewhat consistent, you know, not based on who the person is, you know, those type of things. Because there was some insinuations this last past year that the decision, the punishment was, the punishment that was handed out was, it was a question as to whether it was fair or not because as to the person that was involved. So that's my concern, fairness and consistency.
Right. Well, we always want to make sure that, you know, anybody who's disciplined gets fair hearing and is treated fairly. We would hope that punishments from the school system are administered consistently, regardless of who the people are, who are involved with it. We do have a field process as well.
Like we do if it's over a certain number of days.
Okay, if the person that have claimed, that have alleged that bullied and have occurred, if they're not satisfied with the way the individual school handled, the principal, whatever committee that's in place will handle those, they have a right to appeal further.
Well, they always tell the director of schools, so they're not satisfied at the school level, they always bring up the issue with the director of schools. So if someone is subject to discipline and they've been suspended from school for X number of days, I don't recall the number of days, you know, number 10, they do have a right to appeal it in that case. But the director of schools always has discretion to look at those issues and address any specific concerns that a parent might have with respect to their particular child, or whether that child's a victim or alleged perpetrator of some sort of harassment. So that's something we've always...
So it's a compliance procedure if they're not pleased with what's happening at the school level, they have an option to help.
A lot of times the discipline is issued first by your assistant principals, and very often people will then go to the principals, another stage, and they're very often that you'll have also...
Anything else, Mr. Wade? No. Mr. Halday?
I have three very specific places where I was a little concerned. The first is on page two in line 21. We reference there case law in our discussion of what type of consequences the board may consider or the system may consider. And I'm concerned that that may open us up to any court, anywhere, some judge, somewhere, who decided something could be referenced to the system and say, "You are then bound to act in accordance with that." I would feel more comfortable that if we made reference to, in accordance with legal counsel, who would, of course, bring to the attention of the board and the system whatever prior actions had taken place out there, but it would not specifically reference case law, which is a specific characteristic. If we just were referencing legal counsel and board policies and procedures, I'd like to see that changed, but I'd certainly like Jeff's input as well.
I think that change would be fine and perfect.
Would state statute be a better term?
We're Sixth Circuit, but you still want...
Yeah, you have case law statutes as well, so I think legal counsel is fine, and I think in accordance with legal counsel and board policies and procedures, I think that's fine.
My second item was just above that in line 12. Due to restrictions of access of certain social networking sites, the school system requests that parents provide documentation of any alleged cyberbullying. My only concern there is, are we asking parents to do the investigation for us? And it's a small nuance in the language that we use, but if we said that the school system will permit parents to provide documentation, then we're not making a request of the parents to go out and do investigation, but we're certainly acknowledging that they may have a greater insight or some special access that we do not possess. And I'd like to see that tweaked just a little bit if there's not an objection.
I think that's, just to address that, I hope we can cut you off.
Well, just going on the comment of Mr. Barlow, basically he just said that they were pretty much at the mercy of not having any information if the parents did not provide it, because you just can't go on somebody else's social site and look at it, you know, without passwords and that opportunity. So I don't, I don't know, are we taking away that motivation of the parent to help us, you know, prevent this incident or at least come to a remedy if, you know, that's not there? I'm just, you know, I'm just wondering out loud also.
Yeah, I think the school systems that have this in their policy, several school systems are, had that specific language. This comes from Metro, Deacon County has this language, and several in East Tennessee have this specific language. And I think where this comes from is, you know, the school systems, cyberbullying often occurs off school grounds. So it's not anything that happens during the school day, it may happen after hours. It's not anything easy for the school police. So you don't want to create a legal obligation on the school's part to have to police this and gather this and research this. So I think the intent of this section is saying that we're, you know, parents and students have to recognize that the school system only has a limited ability to address these type of issues, because a lot of this occurs on sites that we have no control over, happened with Facebook and Twitter, you know, system or something like that. We have no control over that and no way to exercise an oversight over it. So this purpose of this section, I think, is to say that those type of issues which affect your cyberbullying, really it's going to be the parent's responsibility or student's responsibility to bring that to our attention, because unless that is brought to our attention, then we have no real way to go out on our own to investigate this adequately and so forth. You don't want, if you change the language as you suggest, that to some extent can be more read by, or possibly interpreted by a judge to say the school system has some more obligation than what it has with respect to cyberbullying. So I think the purpose of this whole sentence here is to minimize kind of the legal obligation from a liability standpoint, the school system has to go out and research and subpoena information from these sites to bring it in. And really, we're going to rely upon the parents and the students to bring this to our attention, because that's really where it can be more readily obtained, because we don't have readily access to passwords and, you know, online names, email addresses and things like that. So we really have to give that information from parents.
I can totally accept that, understand that my only intent was that we not put a burden of investigation on the victim, or at least we limit that burden, because we certainly feel for anyone who might be subject to bullying. The last concern that I have deals with the inclusion of sexual orientation on page one in lines 25 and 26. The only other place where we mentioned in Rutherford County board policy, anything of a sexual nature is sexual misconduct. And I think that we can understand that sexual misconduct is something that we do not want to tolerate, and it is something that we can spend the time to define and identify exactly what that is. By mentioning sexual orientation here and then going on to mention gender, including gender identity, expression, and appearance, we open ourselves up to defining what those characteristics are. I personally feel like that that's beyond the scope of the school system or a minor individual that is entrusted into our care. Matters of a sexual nature don't seem to belong in the educational environment. And as such, I am completely content that we would create an environment free from bullying based on race, color, religion, national origin, handicap, or disability. Ancestry seems like we can define it in an academic manner, but I think we really cross a threshold when we step into defining what sexual orientation is with minors, where issues of sexual nature just seem to not be part of the educational environment. I'd like to see those references removed. Um...
Just will go on your recommendation.
Well, it's whatever the policy committee wants to do, it ultimately is a decision of the policy committee, but what we did with respect to the bullying policy here was try to add specific categories to match what some other policies within the state have done to address issues with respect to gay individuals or people who are, have gender identity people, and just to make sure we list them as people who are not going to be harassed, bullied, or intimidated, and have that directly covered in this policy. If we want to drop those specific references, because it does say sexual orientation and gender identity, it simply say, "Or for any reason," we could do that and not have these categories specifically identified. I mean, there will obviously be some people who will want these categories specifically identified in the policies. So if we do, the policy committee is inclined to drop those, I think we would want to add to this, "Or for any reason," you know, so to make sure that people are not bullied or harassed or intimidated for any reason whatsoever. These specific categories have been listed by several counties in different...
Nationwide, is that not where a lot of harassment has been bullied and occurred?
Nationwide, yes. And I think that's, this language, when I developed this language here, it's not anything I just created on my own, it came from a lot of other policies that I've looked at from other states, other jurisdictions in the school system of Tennessee. And several of those, if not most of those, had those categories in there. So everyone who had all the policies that have been done or reviewed in the last few years that I looked at, had these specific categories in there for sexual orientation and gender identity. So that's why we're including those here. You know, this is just in the anti-bullying harassment section, and just says, the intent of those is to make sure that, for whatever reason, students are not to be harassed, intimidated, or bullied at school or anywhere else. So that's why we have these categories here.
I think you're trying to cover everything too, correct?
We're trying to cover everything, yes.
However, by covering everything, we do cross a threshold of including something in our policy that we are then under an obligation as a school system to define and explain to a minor student who is in our care, and explain to them exactly what sexual orientation or gender identity is. Are we prepared as a school system to render a definition on our own basis as to what those things are? Sexual misconduct, we can identify and say, "That's sexual misconduct." When we cross this threshold, and I don't deny that many other systems, many other places around the country are choosing to go in this direction, I just don't think that it's a place where our community wants our school system to weigh in and set a standard.
Mr. Reed? I'm sorry, Mr. Trump? I guess my question is, how do you know we're crossing a threshold?
Because we don't mention sexual orientation or anything regarding sexual nature in policy except for sexual misconduct. Sexual misconduct is clearly defined, we know what that is. Now we have something called sexual orientation and gender identity, and I think that that is something that quite frankly, we don't totally understand and would be ill-advised to try and explain on behalf of a parent or on behalf of the community that Rutherford County Schools believes that gender identity is defined in this way. It's just not for us to define.
Mr. Reed, is there a judicial benefit for spelling this out in this detail?
From a judicial standpoint, I don't think it matters. If we want to say, "Or for whatever reason," I think that would be fine. So I don't think there's any, anything you gain or lose by not necessarily having that in here. The listing of these categories simply kind of mirror the common categories you see in the anti-bullying, harassment, intimidation policies that other people have adopted. That's why those categories are here.
You'd say you took those out of other people's policies?
Yes.
By them putting them in there, they must have had a situation why they feel like they were necessary.
I'm sure some school system would think that was necessary to have in their policies.
In fact, the state of California, in the first of January, will allow any student, depending on where they identify their gender, to go to the restroom of the gender that they identify with. And it is state law in the state of California. However, that's not where we are. And by opening ourselves up to the question, the definition, the conversation of what is sexual orientation, what is gender identity, by including this language specifically, I like the open language that Mr. Reed suggests, that, or any other reasons, but by including this, we open ourselves up to the same type of language that we find, be it in case law or other areas of the country.
Mr. Halday? Would you also want to remove the "and" appearance? I mean, do we really want to get into identifying how someone should look?
I think that it's inappropriate in this particular policy. I think expression and appearance is covered in dress code.
I do, I printed off this bullying discrimination, and Putnam County does also have the same wording here. And I don't really consider Putnam County a huge progressive place, I used to live in Cookville. So I'm assuming that they put that in there probably for a legal reason.
Well, I, you know, I think it's just the whole intent of this session is just to make clear that we don't, the school system does not tolerate bullying, harassment, or intimidation based on any of these categories here, including sexual orientation, gender identity, and so forth, that those would be categories the school system will not support bullying, harassment, or intimidation for, that the school system does not tolerate bullying based on any of these factors here, including sexual orientation and gender identity. I think that's the pure reason for it being in here. I don't think that's initially geared in the statute or case law, it's just saying that we will not, as a policy, we are not going to tolerate harassment, intimidation, or bullying based on these categories.
Mr. Reed? Once we've identified sexual orientation or gender identity as a specified class, don't we then open ourselves to being able to define what we consider that class to be?
Well, I think that what this is just saying, if you have a situation come up with bullying, what principal's going to do or assistant principal will do, will look and see what kind of bullying is being alleged, what students are involved, what's the basis for bullying. And if a principal or assistant principal finds it's based on sexual orientation, this policy's going to say that it is not tolerated within the school system, and it allows the principal... policy's going to say that that is not tolerated within the school system, and allows a principal or assistant principal to take some disciplinary conduct based on that. So I don't know that you're actually defining what's, what category particular students fall in as much as just giving discretion to the local school administrators to discipline incidents of bullying that occur in school.
I think that, be it historically or even currently, there are more than enough examples of bullying for wearing eyeglasses, or being overweight, or having a strange hair color, or any other physical feature that would be just as open to that discretionary and would fall into the language that you suggest of "or any other concern." I just feel like that when we include sexual orientation or gender identity, then we do obligate ourselves to be able to give a definition as to what it is we were talking about when we use that specific language.
Mr. Reed, if we, if we had a statement, "The Rutherford County Board of Education is committed to providing all students a learning environment free from bullying or harassment for any reason," is that not, would that be all encompassing? Do we have to categorize?
I don't know that you need to, no. A lot of this comes, you know, this comes from state statute, and some of this anti-bullying stuff is, the definitions are in the state statute with respect to creating bullying. I'm not sure that we would have to have those particular categories in here in this policy. Probably I want to go back and look at this policy, this particular statute report back to tell you for sure.
And it is, it is from both state and federal statute of what are protected classes. And there are things that are protected classes in employment law and civil law, and it's reflective of those things. The idea of race, color, religion, national origin, it's reflective of statute, be it state or federal. However, at least for right now, and if you're watching the news, you'll see the debate in the Senate that is occurring as to whether or not there will be a protected class on a federal level for gender identity and sexual orientation. Currently, it's not the case. And even that debate is a debate that is specific to the workplace and not to a minor individual. We're dealing with minors, we're dealing with someone else's child, and we're dealing with sexual nature. It is very, very delicate, to say the least, for us to define what sexual orientation or gender identity is. And by including it here, I believe we obligate ourselves to be able to define, "What did you mean by that when you wrote it in that policy?"
I guess from, the one word in this one that begins after listing to you is the word "expression." I shouldn't have the right to, if, as a male, I shouldn't be able to express myself by going in a ladies restroom. So that, that word concerns me a little bit, if you see what I'm saying there, but the other part doesn't bother as much, is that one word, I want to stop and think about it, because how you express it would be a real personal thing, could, of course, that could violate another rule or something, too. I don't know.
Well, keep in mind, all this, all this section does is deal with bullying, harassment, and intimidation. So that's all, it does not deal with discrimination, it deals with, or frequent at school, by the school administrators, or the school, what bathroom you go to. All this deals with bullying, harassment, and intimidation.
And you said you do not have the state statute with you up?
I do not have this, I don't, there is a state anti-bullying statute, which I don't have with me at the moment. That state anti-bullying statute has some specific categories in there, and there's some language in there that says, "School systems shall adopt policies that prohibit bullying and harassment within the school system." And then goes through and tells you what school systems are required to adopt. So I'd have to go back and look at the statute, whether it has these categories in there or not to tell you for sure.
Because some, you know, our policies reflect state statutes, so, you know, I would think we would want to continue to mirror the legislative language, so.
Would the policy committee be open to, "Or any other reason," adopted by the policy committee, and let Mr. Reed check into the statute implications, report back with the understanding that compliance with state statute would be the intent of the board in the first and second reading?
That would be fine with me, if the policy committee's inclined to go that route. And then I will bring the policy back, and the state statute would look to see what the state statute has in it. If we get by with just saying, "Or whatever reason," that's fine, the statute mandates that we have these specific categories listed, then at that point, we'd have to list these categories.
Would that also include federal statute?
Well, this is driven by state statute.
Okay.
Can you say it's driven by state statute? But I would say one concern will be, and I think that language is included in the statute, I'm almost sure of. What we have in there came from the statute. We also have to be concerned about what Mr. Reed mentioned earlier, our civil rights complaints that are filed with a federal agency, that is, Office for Civil Rights, it can be filed at state level or the federal level. If you leave that language that we have in there out, that, I can almost assure you that will be a problem. I mean, but they're looking at, they're not looking at statutory languages, they're looking at a civil rights complaint, are the protections in place in your policy that need to be in place so that people understand what is protected, what they can file complaints about, what they can't file complaints about? And I feel 100% confident by saying, if we remove what we already have, it would be an issue.
Well, but these things are not in our policy currently. Sexual orientation-
No, I'm talking about what we already have.
Oh, okay.
When the statement, when it's suggested that we remove all of that and just say, "For any reason," I do have a big concern about that.
I, I agree, I agree. I think that, I think that race, color, religion, national origin, handicap, disability, or any other reason, I think that's the jumping off point, is after handicap or disability.
I also think, just to clarify the process, when schools, and Mr. Bravo, who helped you come tell anything incorrectly, are investigating bullying complaints, and I've been a complaint manager and have to do that as well, what you're looking at when you're investigating is the perception of the person who says they are being bullied. So you're looking at a person, a child, who is saying, "I've been bullied, and this is why." And then you go about collecting evidence and interviewing and putting a case together to determine, yes, they are being bullied, and yes, that is why, in order to make a determination about how to discipline or what to do from there. So I mean, I just wanted to clarify, for investigation purposes, you're not defining, you're not having a conversation with the person who's being bullied about race or sexual, any of those things, you're saying, "What happened? What happened? When did it happen?" You're looking at their perception as to why it's happening, to then go about establishing some evidence to support, yes, it did, or no, it didn't. I mean, you, you tell me if I was meant to explain that wrong, but I can't come up with a scenario where you would be having a conversation about the definition of any of those categories.
No, not a definition. Where I, what I, like you said, to sit down and discuss with somebody who thinks they have been bullied or intimidated because of their sexual orientation preference. Again, what we're going to talk about is what, when, and how. An issue where that has been the case, that I've talked with a child and sexual orientation comes up, again, I don't really discuss with them what their orientation is. I, I just want to hear what the details are of what happened here at school.
I understand, and I applaud you for your discretion there and appropriate actions. I'd expect nothing less. My only concern is, do we cross a threshold? Do we break a seal by including it here that we will come to find additional policies are suggested to the board? Well, you mentioned sexual orientation here, why not address it in this area? You mentioned gender identity here, why not address it here? I think the answer is clear, we don't address sexual orientation or gender identity because areas of a sexual nature have no place in education. We work with minors, and we do not concern ourselves with how to educate them about sexual issues. The one exception, of course, biology, health, those type of scientific conversations. But these are not scientific identifications. These are social identifications, these are personal identifications, and I think they are beyond the reach of the educational environment.
I guess my question would be, if you had a case that come up and you don't have this stuff included, what do you do?
Falls into the same category as if it's discrimination on obesity. That's not specifically spoken of here, but absolutely certainly occurs. And so it's in the same area of "or other areas."
I'm open, whatever, whatever committee wants to do. If Mr. Reed wants to look further at it.
Angel, would you explain your position maybe a little broader? Because you, you mentioned you are 100% confident of an issue coming up without the language.
Well, when we, typically, when we have a civil rights complaint filed, it's with the federal agency, which is, our division is in Atlanta, it's the Federal Office for Civil Rights, under the umbrella of the United States Department of Education. And whatever the allegation may be, whether it be, you know, based on, like Mr. Reed said, we've had one recently on disability-based discrimination. And the first thing they look at is, what are your policies? You know, how are, how are you notifying people that these types of things are protected, these types of things are not tolerated, and how are you notifying what their process is if they feel like they have been involved? So if you cut out, and I'm not talking about the new categories, but if we cut out that race, color, religion, national origin, handicap, disability, and gender, I think that if and when a complaint arose under one of those categories, of bullying or harassment, that that would be a, that the Civil Rights Office would definitely say, "You need to include those things in your policy so that people understand, you know, those categories are protected." And I think, and I think we definitely, I might have to go back and look at it, but I think that's part of our state statute, those, those categories that we had in-
I know those, those categories certainly are-
Yeah.
-part of the mandated categories, yes.
So I guess the suggestion was that we stick to the language that's in our state statute, and Mr. Reed can let you know that on first reading, that what specifically is in the statute, if you want to choose to go with that, that would be the motion for this committee's approval on first reading, second reading is what's been suggested. I just, there was some mention of taking all of those out and just saying, "For any reason," and I would be very concerned about removing those categories.
Let me ask you this, is, is this all the categories? There's no other category of bullying that can be covered? I mean, are we leaving any out?
I'm sure there's, I'm sure, no doubt, people can conceive of thousands of ways people can be bullied. So it could be eye color, hair color, it could be obesity, it could be how many teeth they have, you know, a broken arm, I guess, it could be any number of things, yes.
But, but I mean, you know-
And other appearance.
But, but I'm just kind of wondering, we, we are identifying certain categories.
Yes.
But, and, and Angel was talking about, with the federal government, we have to include everything. So is there anything we're leaving out that we should include?
I don't know of any categories that we're leaving out that we readily recognize that these are the main categories you can see in policies, these, the categories you have listed here are the majority of the categories you see in most of the common, the new policies that are written. So they have these, this specific language in there. So there's not anything particularly unique that I craft or came up with, this is literally just pulled from other policies, from other school systems in Tennessee and from other states as well. But this is common language used in Tennessee for the masks. I don't know, I can't tell you how many, but a large, large number of school systems.
Does TSB have a recommendation?
We've sent this to TSB for the review, we've not yet heard back from them on that, but really, we just sent it to them a few days ago, so we haven't had time to get that back yet.
Well, actually, I'm sorry, Jeff, we did. I mean, what you have in your packet is the revision that they sent us.
Okay.
And so typically, what would happen if they had concerns about anything that we had asked to be revised, they would communicate that to me, if they sent it back, you know, "Why wouldn't you use this language? This, this is better." And I didn't get any of those notes from them, so.
Okay, I did not have that.
And he didn't know that, and I just got it back today from him, so. I mean, we certainly could consult with them further to see if they have it repaired, but they didn't communicate any of those.
I'm open to suggestions, I've got my, my feelings, but-
Well, to formalize it then, I would make a motion to amend and to eliminate sexual orientation, including gender identity, expression, and appearance. I would eliminate, I would eliminate those words from lines 25 and 26 of the proposed policy. I'll offer that in the form of a motion as an amendment.
Did you say expression, too?
Sexual orientation, including gender identity, expression, and appearance, that those words would be eliminated, and that the "or any reason" would be tagged on the end.
Would you not rather wait and give Mr. Reed an opportunity to compare state statutes and board policies always mirrored?
You know, I actually like that even better, yeah. Because I really think that state statute is going to show us that these are protected classes, and we do need to include those, but I don't believe state statute is going to show us sexual orientation or anything of gender identity. I, I have not been able to find it.
Well, I'm happy you do that and report back the first reading at board level. If we want to bring it back to the policy committee, we can deal with it back here again as well, whatever the will of the committee is.
Are you changing your motion?
I'm going to withdraw my motion at this time, I apologize, Angel.
My rather's would be, let Mr. Reed research it a little bit further.
Okay.
What, what Mr. Holliday's suggestion, suggestion, but I also versus bringing it back to the board, I feel more comfortable taking it to each policy member and making sure they're in agreement with, since we're one committee.
So you want to bring it back here?
We can bring it back here, or?
We're willing to bring it back to the committee, we're going to deal with it, I can't deal with policy members one-on-one.
Okay.
So we need to come back to the policy committee.
I think if we're going to have a committee, I think it ought to run through a committee. That's my personal opinion there. Board members may have some-
I would agree.
Unless it's something that, that's got to be done.
Change to a bar. That's me.
If that's, that would be my rather's, but whatever.
Do we defer the whole thing, or do we let the other things go and just keep 23 through 28 as it was previously? Mr. Reed, are there compelling things?
I don't think there's anything compelling to require that changes take place today.
Okay.
That may give you time to hear back from the OCR division as well, I don't know how they're affected by discrimination issue that they're looking at now.
And the Senate's debate may open our eyes to something as well.
Yes. So, yeah.
Is that good with everybody? We just delay it till, what, February? Everybody good with that? Anything further? Once again, I appreciate everybody taking their time, how your schedules to come to this meeting, and like I said, we'll, we'll meet four times a year, four times this year, the next one will be in February sometime. Nothing else, we're adjourned.